And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call meeting order. Begin with the approval of the agenda. Start off with the regular session, high school conference room two thirteen, six P M on December seventeenth. Any questions or corrections on the regular session? Yeah, yeah. Keep everybody on their toes. All in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Everybody's caught up with me now? Okay, to the regular session minutes. Any questions, corrections? If not, I'm going to take a motion to approve regular session minutes. All in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Executive session, seven eleven, eight, seven forty-five P M. Questions or corrections on those? Noted and take a motion to approve the executive session. All in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Authorization for payment of bills. Questions on those? Noted and take a motion to approve the authorization for the payment of bills. Same. All in favor? Motion carries seven zero. No citizens communications this evening, so go to administrative room.
Um, we'll start with the elementary. We don't have much because it's been a really short break since the last time that we saw you. Um, but to finish out December, um, we, we had our principals challenge. So if you remember, I challenged them to pass uh, twenty-one hundred lessons and they surpassed that. I think it was like twenty-five hundred, I think, a bit. And they did, uh, take me to the wall and it held me to the wall. They took stool out and I hung there for a little bit. It's really sweaty. It's like a little sauna inside. It was a lot of fun. The kids loved it. Um, it was, it was great. So now I've got to come up with another one to, uh, keep them going with that. Um, some of the things that we have going on right now, we've started tutoring backup P T O tournament. We've done half of that and now we're getting ready to do the other half this weekend, hopefully. Um, we've been working on our second round of diagnostics and, and we're just plugging right along, so. It's all great.
Secondary. Coming up, we have the real simulation. Uh, this is for juniors and seniors. Um, basically what it is, it's where they simulate going through real life. They'll have to, um, they'll be given different situations, like having a substance abuse problem, uh, long-term pregnancy, dropping out of school, different situations. And then they're going to have an income, they're going to have to figure out how to pay the bills and different things. They'll be in the high school gym on the twenty ninth, so I know we're looking forward to students being in there and having to see what is, what it's like in the real world and give a great opportunity for them. Uh, Mrs. O'Haverly pointed all this out, so it was great to work with her on that. And really, yeah, we're just getting things started up. We have basketball on full swing. Uh, Mr. Van Delph will talk about that a little bit more. Court warming will be on the thirty first. It is on the thirty first, so we'll have that also with the dance and activity night.
So who is doing the real simulation? Is it committee action?
Yes, I believe so. Yep.
Yeah, okay. Cause I was a participant in one at Vampar and it is terrific.
Yeah. Looking forward to it. Learn great things.
Yeah, it, um, you know, they will have lost their homes and children will be in foster care. I mean, there's all kinds of things that happens in real life and it's quite a, I mean, it really is kind of learning experience, so. I'm glad you guys are doing that.
Um, student activities, uh, Mr. Van Delph and I went to a mission meeting. Uh, this past week, they have those periodically just to give us some idea of things that are out on the horizon and, uh, they also kind of use it as an opportunity to get a feel for what member schools. So this would be the entire northeast region, um, what we think about some of the issues under consideration. Uh, one that they were looking at is splitting boys and girls' basketball seasons. So what that means is the girls' basketball season would start about two weeks before the boys' basketball season. Uh, as you can imagine, all the smaller schools, um, had a lot of issues we could see with that outside of transportation, coaches who were coaching two teams, uh, a lot of bad things. So the, the feedback on that overall was pretty negative. I don't know. Ultimately, what this will come to is a vote at the end of the year. They'll actually put some of these things on ballot. Or they might not, if it was negative enough across the state. Um, another one was potentially just splitting classifications. And the, the big driver to all of this and why they're looking at it is because the girls' class one is so out of alignment with the boys' class one. Uh, there's a difference of, I think, about thirteen schools, um, that they're putting in girls' class one versus boys' class one. So they're trying to geographically smooth everything out, um, district wise. They have a couple of districts in the state of Missouri, class one girls that have three schools in the entire district tournament. Um, and then you have districts with eight schools in them. So they're trying to come up with a way to smooth that out a little bit. Um, like I said, splitting seasons didn't get good feedback, but the splitting classifications. So you could potentially have, um, uh, what could end up happening is the boys' team, our boys' team going to Canton for a district tournament and our girls going to Skyler County for this. Could, could happen under the, this other part. Um, feedback for that was more positive, but only slightly. And I think people realize that the state's probably going to have to do something. Uh, another thing came up, esports is an emerging activity, um, believe it or not. This is video gaming between schools competitions. University of Missouri, I think they said there are fifteen million dollars in scholarships now available for students. Not just at University of Missouri, but across the state. So it's becoming a real thing. Um, uh, they need fifty schools to make it an official activity. That's why it's still an emerging activity. There are thirty-nine right now who are in it. Uh, we are, I think, seriously considering whether we end up joining that. It's pretty neat to get a lot of interest from kids that have no interest in anything else and, and, uh, you know, I had some good discussions the other day with kids who are not getting the best grades. And I said, if you're going to be on the team, you gotta get the same grades as somebody who's playing basketball. And you can see him thinking about it. It was encouraging.
Carter holding up for Carl. They do actually give, give scholarships for that.
Yeah.
Do they really?
Bass fishing is an emerging activity. I don't think it's. Yeah, I don't know what the. They are giving very serious consideration to, uh, expanding Mission membership down to sixth grade level. So that would mean that six, seventh, and eighth then could form our junior high, uh, teams. Um, we don't have a timeline yet on that one, when that would go into effect. I know for the basketball thing, they weren't talking any earlier than twenty twenty-one, uh, the twenty-one, twenty-two season. So I'm, I'm sure this isn't, definitely isn't any sooner than that. An important note is it would not be required. It, it wouldn't be like you have to let sixth graders. Our district can still say, we're not letting sixth graders play. That would still be us, up to us, but, but, uh, Mission would allow sixth graders to be part of the teams if we wanted to.
Like Skyler this year played sixth graders and they just weren't Mission compliant.
Right.
They did that for football and basketball.
Become an affiliate, which means they're not eligible for the, the, uh, insurance that Mission offers. And that's probably the major, major thing.
They did that for football and basketball, yeah.
Um, the fourth thing, the final thing was that mental health training is going to be required for coaches, sort of like we do C P R and, the online rules review and those things right now. Obviously, anybody who gets it already is part of their teacher education, professional development, wouldn't have to do it again. But, uh, overall, that got pretty positive feedback also. Um, Kevin Fromm came back with a quote for football bleachers that didn't go away. I got back to him. Um, so just for information, I just want to make sure everybody's aware. He came back, this was to replace all the wood materials, um, with aluminum, widen the aisles, north and south, add handrails, aluminum planks on ramps, plus give us a new entry plant platform on the north end of the press box. Uh, the quote for all of that, sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. Um, concession, baseball concession stand is done, ninety-five percent done, looks awesome. Went down there today and, uh, Mr. Green and his guys. So it's got new paint. Uh, we think it's mostly mouse proof now, or it helps it to be mouse proof. Um, just looks nice in there and clean and looks good. Uh, scholar bowl teams are getting ready to crank up. Would have already been going if it had them in for the weather, uh, the last couple of weekends. But, um, they're in place and, uh, you can see there the events at the bottom. North Shelby basketball tournament is this week. Court warming is January thirty-first. Worthington is tenth to the fifteenth. They actually be the tenth, twelfth, and fifteenth. Uh, senior night on the twenty-first and district basketball is, starts on February twenty-third. That's all I have. Sorry for the delay.
Just a couple of things I wanted to point out. I was a little, um, preemptive in one of my things. I thought we would have all our special education files in, but mother nature had other plans. So we are going to, uh, the fill-up is coming, um, Thursday this week and we're going to get those in. We have until next week, so we still have some time. And, um, it's a little ways off, but preschool kindergarten screening is March sixth. So spread the word. You put it out on social media, it's going in the newspaper, but anyone you see that has little ones, remind them and tell them to call Gail. So we can get them scheduled. And we've made some adjustments, so hopefully our timing will not be, um, as long as last year.
Uh, a few things. So I'm gonna update on some legislative things that. Something for you guys to keep an eye on. Um, there's four bills being introduced that impact how, um, whether it's property is being assessed or the amount that could be increased in assessed valuation to what do we do with, um, personal property taxes. So there's, someone went that wants to file a bill to get rid of personal property taxes in Missouri. Um, there's a bill, Senate Bill five seventy-nine, that would be capping, um, whatever a hundred percent of the growth, um, in the property taxes and making it eighty percent. You can only see eighty percent of whatever the hundred percent growth. Um, there's a lot, there's a bill, Senate Bill six seventy-five and seven oh nine, um, are capping the assessed valuation growth. The, your assessed valuation cannot increase more than five percent, which that would not have impacted us in the last five years, but we don't know when it would. But if you would have something that would help your assessed valuation grow, you would want that, um, so. Um, and then Senate Joint Resolution forty-three, that would cap an increase on residential real estate properties. So, um, each individual real estate property could not increase any more than the C P I index. So there's a lot of attacks on our local funding. Um, so it's something we need to pay attention to and as session goes on, I'll keep you guys updated and might call for your help if you happen to talk to one of our legislators and, um, let him know how it impacts us. Something else to keep in mind, the government, governor made really clear that, um, teachers' pay in Missouri ranks forty-eighth in the nation and that he is going to put a lot of emphasis on increasing teacher salaries. There are some legislators that want to file a bill, but they can't agree on what the starting pay for teachers should be. So they've tossed around thirty-five, thirty-eight, and forty thousand dollars a year. We currently pay thirty-three thousand. So if they raised any of those amounts, that would increase by quite a bit. A lot of times you say, well, it's legislation, it's not going to go through, but on something like this, uh, governor's pushing it. Then Desi came out with their recommendation, which is thirty-two for the base and a minimum of four thousand dollar increase for every teacher that's currently in the profession. So for us, if we increased every teacher that we have four thousand dollars, you add retirement cost to that, that would be a two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollar additional expenses every year. So something to keep in mind, um, is what's going to happen this year in legislation because I, I really do think, who's going to argue that teachers don't need to get paid more? They all do. I, I don't think they get paid enough for what they do. The question's going to become is how's that going to be funded? So my fear is, it's going to be left to the districts to figure out how to come up with the funding. Um, a lot of people think that that's a way for them to close small schools and kind of push that direction. Um, so I'm bringing that to your attention. It's just something to keep in mind and something we're going to have to pay attention to because before we can sit here and say, you know, let's do this, let's do that, we need to figure out what, what are we looking at next year? Um, if they leave it to us, what are our options to come up with that? Um, luckily we have good fund balances, but if you're incurring that type of expense every year, it's not going to take long. Fund balances are going to be gone. So the next, next point is, you know, then you have to go to the taxpayers and say, we need help. Hopefully it doesn't get to that. Hopefully they come up with a good solution on how we can get additional revenues to offset whatever they make. But I, I truly believe and I think the consensus around is something's going to happen to teacher salaries and they're going to go up significantly. So keep an eye on that. Um, while we're talking about that, um, I wanted to, kind of, we've been talking with the administrative team, been talking about some issues that we need to address. So we put the greenhouse up this, um, summer. And in putting the greenhouse, we've created some drainage problems that's, or that's creating a problem for the neighbor trying to get their crops out. So we have to, um, try and figure out how we can remedy that. In conjunction with that, um, we've been looking at, um, getting some bids to start repairing some of the concrete sections that are deteriorating as well as ultimately our goal is to pave both, you know, concrete, both parking lots, the high school and the middle school. So looking at all that, the first thing we have to do is when we pave it, we can't have all that water shedding over next door. So, um, we have someone coming to look at our parking situation, our drainage situation. Um, so my first inclination and Gary's was to just take our storm drain and tap into it and run it right down the parking lot. The concern is the amount of water that that would produce and would the storm drain be able to handle that much water? So, um, they're going to come out here and we're going to try and come up with options. What are our options to solve that drainage issue so that, um, the water goes where it needs to go? Um, once we get that figured out, obviously one of our goal is to get the parking lot paved. Um, our roofs are out of warranty, have been out of warranty for a couple of years now. And we're starting to see leaks pop up several places. We had one this morning. Gary went up and went looking for it on the roof. Something that we're going to have to consider, um, looking at, figuring out, um, when our flat roofs have a leak, it's hard to find. Um, because wherever the leak's at, it's going to travel. And so wherever you find the leak, it may be a ceiling tile in the middle of the room, but the leak could be in the roof, could be in the cafeteria, traveling all that way. So it's, it's really difficult to pinpoint where they're at. Um, I've tried looking, trying to find out, and Marcia's going to do some digging for me, trying to figure out what year it was. And I don't know if any of you guys remember when they actually put the roof down. Um, I know that in two thousand, um, two thousand and six, they did some repairs to it and paid some repairs and had the, uh, warranty extended. The company that comes and fixes our leaks and that took care of our warranty said that they would come and they would, um, work on our roof, um, and take care of whatever leaks are there. And then they would reissue a warranty, but we're talking a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to have that done. So, um, something else that we need, you know, bleacher, we had our bleacher inspections done. The elementary bleachers have several issues with them. Of course, every time we'll get inspections, first thing we get dinged on on both those. And the football bleachers is the handrails to go up the bleachers. That's number one. Um, the mechanical, um, devices that pull out the bleachers in the elementary are almost non-functional. And so it's a safety issue for the maintenance people when they pull them out and push them back in. Um, there's several issues there, but the total amount to get the elementary bleachers to where they're at is fifteen thousand dollars. Um, and, um, the, um, football bleachers, it's kind of like we've been putting a Band-Aid on it. We find the worst boards every summer and then have Gary go out there and they, some, some of the bolts they have to torch off because they're so old. But they go out there and replace as many boards as they can. Um, so, you know, and then we don't have the handrails, so that's why, you know, I told Keith, we just need an idea. What would it be if we did everything aluminum, so you don't have to mess with it again? Have the handrails. Um, like he said, the press box, um, it'd be nice if the, the door was on the south, south end, right? Is that what they're bidding or north end?
They're bidding north end because the electricity comes into the south.
So it'd be nice if it was on the north end because then you could have a hallway in the back and all your booths in the front. And, you know, I think the flow would be easier. Plus, right now, as is, to get in the press box, you have to walk through the bleachers, so. Um, so those are all things that, you know, we did refurbish the, um, baseball concession stand. So we're getting some things done. Um, when I, my first year as superintendent, our fund balances, um, at the end of December were two point six eight million. Fund balances now are two point oh six million, so roughly about sixty, six hundred and twenty thousand dollars less than they were. Now, in that time, we've spent five hundred and sixty thousand redoing the windows and the brick out of our fund balances. We've spent a hundred and fifty thousand on the track, sixty thousand on the playground. We replaced the bleachers in the gymnasium, which was a little north of fifty thousand dollars. We spent close to a hundred thousand dollars on the softball field. We put up the greenhouse. We got a grant for that. Um, and we gave raises every year. We've added technology. We've added great equipment, the print shop. So we've done great things and we're going to continue to do great things. This summer, my plan was to address some concrete issues, but I'm feeling like we need to address, address some drainage issues first. And we may address the drainage and the concrete at the same time. The good thing, the positive thing is as long as your project's less than seventy thousand dollars, you don't have to pay prevailing wage. So the question is, is how much money do we have to spend and which projects do we want to focus on? So I do believe the bleachers is, is important. I do believe that, um, the drainage is important. We have to figure out what we're going to do with the leaks. And Gary's like, well, if I can find it, I can fix it and it'll last a while. Um, so we can keep doing that, but at some point, we need to get some ideas of what we're doing. This summer, we could probably, we did have budgeted eighty thousand dollars to purchase a bus and we've had the conversations about the electric bus. We'll talk about it some more today. Even if we, um, decided to, um, say we decide we're going to buy it different from electric or buy an electric, by the time we get the bids and put the orders in, the bus would not be here until next school year. So that eighty thousand dollars that's budgeted in the budget is there. So that could be, we could do a budget adjustment. That could be spent somewhere else. Um, the budget right now as is, is thirteen thousand to the good. So you got about ninety-three thousand dollars that we could do in projects this summer without, um, taking the budget over budget. So, but we have a lot of projects and that's not going to tackle the projects we have. And I'm bringing this up just that we need to be thinking moving forward. Um, the roofs are going to take some attention. The parking lot's going to take some attention. So, um, I'm going to keep my eyes open and try and see what our options are. How soon is it? I know we talked about no tax increase bond issue, maybe, hopefully we didn't have to do that again if we could keep, um, the projects going. We have replaced all the carpet throughout the building, put that on rotation, put the bathrooms on rotation. So we've been doing a lot of projects, but some of these bigger projects may require a little bit more funding and a different way of doing it. So I just want you guys to be, you know, we're gonna, I'm gonna put together some ideas of what we can do this summer for this project. But I'm also going to put some projections on what are some things that we need to be looking at? Do we think we need to do a no tax increase? But I'll just try in the next couple of months, just lay all that out and say, here's some things we need to do and try and get some ideas, you know, hundred and sixty thousand on the roof. What is it if you put a new roof on? Um, just get all those options out there. What's it going to cost? The concrete, the parking lot? Um, just kind of get an idea. Obviously, I'd like to do as much as I can every summer without the bond issue and keep it under seventy thousand because you save a lot of money if you keep it under prevailing wage. So if we can work it out to where we, we can figure out a plan to do that, that'd be great. But not, um, I want to put all options out there, so I want you guys to know that I'll be working on that and trying to get you guys.
Look into that solar option too on the flat roof.
Yeah.
There might be some fair amount of solar options.
Yeah.
Also think, Mr. Currie, we need to prioritize the projects that what's going to be most used. You know, we all use the parking lot, we all use the roof. Our football bleachers, um, in the, they're getting old, they're, they're used not that frequently. Same bleachers in the, in the grade school. Make sure that people start putting price accordingly to the amount of usage that there is. We need to for sure prioritize what's going to be used to utilize the roofs.
Bleachers in the elementary, that's more just for pushing them and controlling them out.
More and then they're starting to get gaps in there too, so.
Yeah, not only what's used the most, but what is the most detrimental to put off longer?
Well, yeah. I mean, if your roofing issues become more and more an issue, that's going to be a.
That's not going to sound, yeah.
And I have another question on the drainage. How, what's different in the drainage today of what's going on in the neighborhood of what it was ten years ago, twenty years ago, thirty years ago? It may be entering at a different point, but there's still, there's no more drains from that way now than what there was.
When we put the greenhouse, it pushed all the water to drain in one place. So instead of, before it might have just went off the football field and just, it was, it's pretty wet there and there was some water standing when the, the rest of their field was fairly dry. Um, that's a minor concern. We can fix that, but as we're talking about paving the parking lot, someone had mentioned once about just slope it down. Well, if you do that, all that water's going to run over there. And I don't think that's fair. That's, yes. So we got to have somewhere for the water to go because we don't want it coming to the building. We don't want it pooling in the parking lot. So it's got to drain somewhere.
But the water's not, you're not changing anything. The water's already going there. That's the thing. It, it may get there quicker, but it's already going there.
Yeah.
So by changing, I guess, the only thing we can do is re-bridge going back west and what you're thinking.
Yeah.
Back west.
Yeah.
Now you're going to be putting water across that neighborhood instead of where it's already gone.
Well, that's.
So see where that's.
Well, that's, that's where I was like, it needs to go down the storm drain or it needs to go in the ditch and.
Storm drain just dumps right over here, going far property, running straight across right behind, uh, the neighbor's house. And that's where it downs. The drains, it comes out over there to the south, the softball field. It just, you always do is change your, your point of release. Uh, you're not, the water, wherever it's going, it's already going.
Right.
And by change the point of release, you may help the neighbor here, the person neighbor there.
Yeah. Well, the concern is when you put the parking lot in is the water's no longer just going to drain straight down. All of it's going to go somewhere and that's what we have to.
It runs out.
Yeah. The other thing I have on there, central office, we're still having some settling issues. So Clangers is coming back next week with, uh, contractors to take a look at it again and find out what the issue is. We've had this issue since they've remodeled it and they've kept coming, kept taking measurements, saying it was heaving and that at some point it'll stop and they'll come in and fix all the damage, but it's not stopping. So they're going to come look at it next week and.
Is it going up or slowing down?
Well, that's what they're saying. It's going up. It has been going up. Well, that's what they're saying, it's going up, it has been going up, um, instead of going down. But there's some different shifting happening just in the last two months, so. They're planning on being here Tuesday, so hopefully we get some answers and figure out what we need to do. I know the ladies are dreading moving out of the office so they can fix it, but probably what it's gonna take.
Well, it's kind of an issue when we repaired that, I can remember.
Yeah.
That floor.
Yeah, before it was sinking.
Yeah.
Yeah, now it's.
Now it's going the other way.
I'm surprised my glass wall hasn't busted because it shifted that wall the most.
What they said when they built this and probably again, it's a water issue. With that, whenever the school was built, they built that for a basin over there and what's supposed to be, and then they filled it back in and built right top.
Yeah, that was the issue.
So when they redid it, they understood that and they took out three feet of dirt. And then packed in gravel, watered it and ran over. I mean, I watched them do it, I mean, they just packed it in as tight as can be and then poured the concrete on top and now it's.
And because they've, they've packed it, it's modest heat.
Yeah.
But once it gets watered, then it kinda.
So. I, um, so that's that. The other thing I wanted to kinda talk to you guys about, MSIP six, um, Desi's Missouri School Improvement Guide. Went through the last revisions and is gonna come up for a vote. Um, what you see on the board is kinda what we've been using to kinda with our new strategic plan that we've been working on. Just making sure that it aligns with what the state's asking for. Um, so we've been, just wanted to give you guys an update on progress. But, um, over there, they have a leadership strand in their, um, L six and that's the portion of it that really pertains to the board. So basically, we work together, um, and communicate frequently to solve the problems of the school. And I've got it in our strategic plan. So basically, um, the board and the superintendent will engage on ongoing professional learning and self-evaluation in order to strengthen governance practices. The local board and administration will conduct school system business in an ethical, legal and transparent manner. The local board adopts monitors, annually reviews and implements the outcomes and stra- uh, of the strategic plan and focuses on district performance and improvement. And then the local board establishes and implements policies that provide a framework within which the school system operates and ensures legal compliance. So those are the things that pertain to the board, all of that we currently do, so that's not an issue, but I wanted you guys to be aware of that. Um, if you look at the TV up there, um, we, we've been working on the strategic plan. Um, we have our strands and our goals. First strand is learning and innovation, second strand is climate, third strand is support and the last strand is community partnership. And we have five goals that we're focusing on, um, but each of the goals have, um, their own objectives. So like goal one has to do with student achievement, so if you go down there, there's something that addresses ELA, math, science, social studies. All other subjects, um, as well as graduation attendance rate, student success after graduation, all that is incorporated in that. Um, then when you go to the climate, so we talk about, um, recruiting, attract, attracting, keeping and developing high qualified staff. So it talks about professional development. Um, then we talk about, um, programs to attract teachers here. So the partnerships that we have with inviting colleges over here and, um, to the grow your own program that we're working on. Getting students interested in the teaching field, so those are all becoming part of our strategic plan to try and, um, grow our own teachers. Then we go to goal three, um, provide appropriate, um, functional and safe facilities. So the first one, objective one deals with safety around the school, so it has a whole section on school safety. And then objective two deals with the facilities and the maintenance and upkeep of the buildings and, um, so that deals with all of that. Then you get to the support side, um, where we talk about library services and how they support the classroom. And we talked about, um, the food service program, the transportation program, um, talked about the school finances and then leadership in the building. And so that covers all of that. And then at the end, the parents and their involvement in the school and then business partnerships, um, and how we're looking to bridge that. So when you go on these, um, all of these have a section, then it talks about for each one of those objectives, here's our strategies. Here's the action steps we're gonna take. So we're in the preliminary stages, we have a lot of work done. We met a lot during PD days last year to try and frame, frame this up and come up with our, our objectives, um, and our goals. Um, and now we're working on some strategies and now we're gonna pull some people in, um, get the committee together to look these over and start making comments. Um, and then our goal is a section of this strategic plan's gonna be presented at each board meeting. And that's kinda, kinda like our program and services evaluation report. So, um, that way the strategic plan is revisited every month or talked about every month and we're continually working on it. So that's the progress we've made, we've been able to make a little more progress with these snow days. So, um, that's, um, been nice to be able to sit together and collaborate and talk about it, make some changes to it. Um, then we'll get the committee together, take a look at it and then have you guys slowly look through it and give us some feedback and so. That's where that's at and that's all I have. I took up more time than Mr. Turgeon.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Keith, you don't feel bad at all. Okay, that'll bring us to the food service report.
All right. Kisha says we had a great start to the schoolyard, I don't know if that means that they didn't have to prepare as many meals with missing so much snow days. But they're very busy, um, and then, um, she wants to brag on her staff. They do come in early, um, sometimes if they need to come in a little early. And I think they have a great attitude, um, so. I'll agree, this is, this has been tough for them, it's been a change, um, how they did things before is totally different. So, and they've had a great attitude about that and they work really hard and I think they do a great job and so does Kisha. So, um, she does have an awesome team. Opa to Go and Grab, Grab and Go continue to be a big hit. And I think that's created a lot of work, that's put a lot of smile on a lot of kids' faces. So I think that's a definite great, um, asset to our school and great for our kids. They're looking at starting a couple of new programs in the high school to try and increase our participation. So the Grab and Go at the high school level, right now they do it at the elementary. And then, um, so she's gonna try and find out what they'd be interested in there. Has she, um, have you guys talked anymore about the Grab and Go for going to ballgames? Or students if they leave out of school? Okay, I know that's something she wanted to try and, you know, kids have a long day and then they get to grab a go. Get a Grab and Go and take it on the bus with them, so anyways, um. Food service program's still something that the kids are pretty excited about, so it should be. I mean, I think our food choices are awesome and, um, I think the kids are eating a lot more, so.
Very good. No items under unfinished business, we move to new business, we'll work you on updates.
So I just wanted to, um, kinda go over a few things that's going on in the world of curriculum. Mr. Turgeon talked a little bit about the committees and the, and the strategic plans. So last year, the curriculum portion, um, part of that met and they came up with some goals for things that we needed to improve on. So I kinda made this the focus of what I wanted to look at and start with this year in this new position, so. Uh, one of them was a way to share curriculum that's been written to new teachers. Current, previously, we've been using iTunes U and sharing through that was difficult and made even more difficult when we went to managed devices. So, um, I decided that was not in our best interest, so we now, um, are using a Google Drive. That will be much, it's much easier to function with and share with. And everyone can have access to parts of, um, each other's if they're willing to share that, so. Um, an accountability system that works and is consistent, um, so we have a rotation. We've always had a rotation, um, going through the changes with Common Core to Missouri Learning Standards. That rotation kind of got jumbled, we were rewriting ELA and math quite a bit there, so. Um, we got back on a five-year rotation, this year is Super Core writing, next year would be ELA and none of that. Um, a curriculum template, we had one, um, but everyone used it a little bit differently. And I thought just one uniform template would be good and so I've worked on that. Uh, consistency and lack of curriculum leadership, which we created that, um, with the new duties in my job, so that's been a focus for me. And if there's a new class, should the curriculum be written at the end of the school year? So those are some things that we felt we needed to focus on. So the first thing, well, let me see, last night, first thing I did was establish the, the, um, schedule. Super Core this year, ELA, math, science and social studies, so that's been established. Then I came up with a curriculum template for everyone to use, um, regardless of what you teach. And a process that we go through together, so this is a little glimpse of what it looks like. They, um, they're also given a folder that has all of their curriculum, all of the standards, all of the, um, blueprints. Different things that they need to identify what should become their essential questions and their priority standards. So that they're teaching the main things, but all curriculum standards are being, being hit. So this is what the blank one looks like. I'm not gonna show you one of ours, but a finished product would look something like this. Where you have the essential questions, corresponding big ideas. You'll go down and look at your priority standards, this is the standards that support this, and this is a third grade math, um, unit. And they'll also put in learning goals and resources that they so use. We're not putting assessments in there because we, that's a separate file that they will keep. Cause that's not something that we want shared or made public for everyone to see. One of the things that they were like, well, how do we pick our priority standards? So we came up with an action plan. Super Core's a little different because they're, they're content areas, they don't share a lot of that music, um, and PE are one. So this is more for when we get into the, the, the core subjects, your ELA, math, science and social studies. Where we'll do grade spans and we'll do vertical teaming to really look at the priority standards and make sure that we don't have gaps. And that we're covering everything that needs to be covered. And so ELA will start this process, I'm hoping I can get them in over the summer, that's my goal. So that they can sit down and really, if they wanna work on it over the summer, they have that opportunity. Or they can start right at the beginning of the school year. The next thing is all courses will have a pacing guide to make sure that they can see where they need to be as they're teaching it. This doesn't look very interesting, but when it's all done, it'll be color coded and look like this. So that you can see each unit is thirty days or two weeks depending on what it is and they can kinda track themselves. And then, um, every year we'll compare our data to make sure that we don't have gaps in our standards. Or that we're not missing something in certain grade levels and we'll revisit and revise as needed, so. But I feel like we're in a good place, I feel like I've gotten good feedback even from, uh, you know, with Super Core, they're like, this is a much easier process. It's uniform, they can talk to each other because they're all using the same format and, and templates. So it's really been pretty good so far. Now, new teachers, I, I have told them, first year teachers, new content, I said, you're not required to write your first year. That's something you can kinda keep track of. I said, I would suggest working on your pacing guides, so you can kinda get up and I, and work on that as you're going throughout the school year. Then you'll have an idea of what units you'll need to line out. But they're like, if this is so easy, a lot of them are already starting on and getting them going. So that's been encouraging because you don't always see that with the first year teachers, so. So that's where we are in this curriculum world, I just wanted to give you an update on how that was going. Any questions?
This is a football program.
Go ahead, Coach.
You guys remember it?
I do.
So, um, obviously with, uh, Skyler County making a jump, I know there's been a lot of questions. I'd love to know, to go to a state meeting, uh, the week after they made the decision. And I walked in the building, I was related by five or six, and I walked in. And it's not necessarily a thing that, uh, anyone wants to do or decision you think they like, it's, you know, it's the best thing for us. Or, you know, we're the one, I guess, for the eleven, but it gets to a point, I think we'll kinda look at some numbers that something we need to maybe consider. I'm not saying it's a thing you have to make a decision, obviously next year not, not what we're talking about, but something needs to be discussed and talked about. And, uh, and, and sort of differences are really. So as a staff, we, we've looked into this for a few years now, nothing serious, but just kinda understanding, you know, what is the big differences. Sure you had Ball, right, the high scoring game was shut last year, ninety-seven, eighty-seven, which is crazy fun now. Just, it's coming closer and closer, initially it was all west and south. Keatsville, which is like fifty miles away, they just actually started a program. And then obviously the road shutting in Skyler County way back this last season. So, uh, a couple of things happening next year, this, this is my numbers from me looking at some research. Uh, I think they expect about thirty-four teams next season. And, uh, the enrollment's what, I, I guess what I've looked at, so, um, for the mission enrollment, which is the three classes, freshmen, sophomore and junior, and all admission counts. And you look at this number from this past season, um, eight-man schools were average of ninety-nine for their enrollments. Whereas the one A, which has shifted draft gods for the last few years, is up to a hundred and forty-six. Um, our number for those years was a hundred and three. So next season, if all the teams go eight-man, they say they will, we are hitting one, uh, change. But, um, we're gonna be the third, fourth smallest school in, in eleven man. So obviously, school number's not everything, you know, it comes down to your roster size and stuff like that as well. But, um, uh, last season we were below our average for sure, but, um, we're, we're in the bottom, bottom part of that as well. Doesn't mean we can't get the year in, year out, but, um, it's just gonna be hit or miss at best case. But like I said, something to think about, um, I guess my biggest thing, I, I found some information, that's looking, uh, mileage travel, I know is a big thing too. And that's, uh, I, some of the schools, if it went early, they traveled, uh, two and a half hours, three hours or something, or had Saturday games because of it. Um, I figured out our last three, our, our average distance for our, our schedule last year, just last season, um, was ninety, no, I'm sorry, sixty-five miles. Obviously, we don't travel at every game that doesn't have our home, brother like that. Um, then I count, uh, South Harris, our Michigan, which was quite a little jump across the state for us. Um, and then you can figure, I figured the nine closest teams in eight man, um, which it wouldn't be every year, but it was a hundred and three miles, uh, for a season. So you're like, you'd have that obviously, but, um, it's still always a way, but I try to lie, forty, forty-seven miles for something considered to think about. And I think, cause your house has got some numbers and information for them, I guess.
Yeah, so this, while Coach was talking about it, this is the district map from last year. Uh, you can see over here, uh, maybe you can't, but over on the far right side is North Shelby, of course. And you can see there in the same district with the other purple bubbles over there toward the Kansas City area. Uh, that's, that was their district, so there is no other, uh, at, on last year's schedule, there is no other team, uh, east of Chillicothe. In the north half of the state of Missouri, that's the closest teams. Uh, now, of course, Skylar's gone, Keatsville, I think, is going right, uh, eleven man. So you're starting to see some, those of course don't appear on here because they weren't eight man last year. So, you're starting to see some, those, of course, don't appear on here because they weren't eight-man last year. Starting to see some more numbers closer to where we are over here. I wanted to show you, and this is, this is extremely unscientific, but if you broke right now our classes into, into three blocks, four-year periods each one, you'll see that this year's high school class, nine through twelve, if you just took simply the average of the number of boys per class, instead of about twenty-five percent of the boys in our high school would play football, it would project twenty and a half, and I think we actually ended the season with twenty at best, maybe, right? When you include injuries and everything else. So, again, this is not scientific at all, but if you then go down by four-year blocks, look at eighth down to fifth grade, that would project like sixteen kids, and then fourth down to first would project sixteen kids. I would tell you that, that playing eleven-man high school football with twenty kids is extremely difficult. You fall below that. You are unquestionably putting fourteen-year-olds out on fields with eighteen-year-olds, which is, we're doing that already sometimes, and, and a lot of times, it results in injuries at best. A lot of times, it results in kids who don't enjoy football very much anymore and decide they don't really want to be a part of that. Believe it or not, and people go, well, going from eight-man to eleven-man, all you're saving is three people. You're keeping three kids out. And Coach pointed out to me, it's, but it's three on offense, it's three on defense, it's three on special teams. So those are all spaces where you're not having to put kids out there who aren't really ready to deal physically with that level of football, plus just the, you know, the pressure of, of playing varsity, varsity football. Eight-man is limited to schools with a hundred and fifty or fewer. The field size changes, and that's really the main thing. And that doesn't require, there's nothing costly we have to do to the field. It's simply moving the sidelines in, shortening the field. We don't have to move goalposts, we don't have to tear them out, we don't have to do, we can work around almost everything we've got there. North Shelby already has their field set up for eight-man, if you ever are down that way and just want to see what one looks like. So that's good news also. This, I wish I could blow this up a little more. Let me just back out of here, and I will. These are what I would call coach projections, and you can see, these are broken up. This is twenty-twenty up here, then twenty-twenty-one, then twenty-twenty-two. So you'll see these numbers move to the right as we go through, and we're looking at football here, but I also put softball and then high school, or I put boys and girls basketball on here also. So you can see, this year, this coming fall, this is based on coach projections. They're saying we're going to have eighteen kids playing middle school football. Look over to the right, this is based right now on what Coach Vinois pulling out from numbers of kids who are coming back and kids who are entering ninth grade. We're looking at twenty kids this year for high school football. You go down to next year, we might recover a little bit. And then the year after that looks even better. I will also tell you that this, again, is based on coach projections, and coaches are always overly optimistic. Because they think every kid who played in sixth grade is going to play through twelfth grade. And that rarely happens, and then kids get hurt, kids get bad grades, life situations change. So I would say this is a best-case scenario for football. And, again, it's not, you know, it's not something that we've talked a lot about, and Coach Vandell, to myself, and Coach Vinois, and Coach Ackman. I, I don't know why for sure there's this perception that eight-man football's not really football, and a lot of people are very reluctant to take it on. I would tell you, everything's exactly the same. You still run, you still block, you still tackle, you do all the same things you do with eleven-man, you're just doing it with eight people, three fewer people. Rules are the same. I think it's probably going to make sense for us. If we do it, and when we do, come to you formally to ask you to make, help us make that decision, we want to do it the right way with our conference. I think that's important to everybody in this room, so that they get plenty of notice that we are seriously considering that, or that we've already, we're deciding we're doing it. So, I've told Mr. Turgeon that a critical point to me is, really, if we are looking to do this, not this coming fall, but then the year after that, be the twenty-twenty-one season, we should make that decision before May. Because athletic directors, believe it or not, this fall's already, we're already locked in contracts, and we've talked to officials and everything's set up. So, by the time summer gets here, people will start looking at twenty-twenty-one. We want to be able to let everybody know, I think, in our conference especially, that, that this is the way we're going. So, I know we talked about at some point coming back with an action item to, to let you all take a vote on whether this is something we should do or not. Where's the numbers been the last thirty years? Do we see, we see what the prediction is for next year and the next two years? Or have they been the last thirty years?
Come on, for football or for enrollment?
Football.
So, we, we've helped re-study typically. This season, we's twenty, this is, I mean, twenty-eight, I would say, about four years ago. Twenty-six has kind of been our golden number. It seemed like we held twenty-six for about two or three years in a row. And then the last, last year, I believe we started with, last, not this season, last season, I mean, we started with twenty-five, and then this season, we started with twenty-three.
But you ended also last season with fewer than twenty-two, because I know the last two or three weeks of the year, we were, we were practicing with fewer than, we didn't have enough.
And that, that's, again, that's all of the same things to say, but, yeah, endings were where it matters. And this season, we, we get to the point where you can't practice, we can't scrimmage, that's where everything changes. And we were like that, I would say, if I read five this season. You know, when you get to playoffs, and we're talking about that last season, it's a little different because you're not going to go full, full board at that point, but this season, like I said, it was week five, week six. We were, we coached our practice, and we didn't do that. But, we saw the numbers, we can't, we can't give a look, we can't give a look. And my biggest thing is, if you're going to ask me, I would take eleven, I'd take all that. But, we're putting the kids in situations where they're not going to be successful. And there's no way around that, because, love all my kids, we had players out on the field this last two weeks that did not even, did not even be able to do anything. And, they're just not ready, it's not what they want.
Not, not just success, winning, but...
Exactly, safe, safe, yeah. It's not, at that point, yeah, it's not much of a lot, we're just trying to make it through, which is unfortunate. You know, ultimately, I think this is, if that's the rapid, unless something changes, it could be an option to be, but it's like, so. And I know the numbers thing scares everybody, and high school, and it's basketball, it's, it's a term we hear a lot, but, there's still a lot of skill to it. So, and, like I said, it's the same.
So speaking of safety, in the gameplay, is there any literature or studies out there as far as eight-man being more or less safe? Strictly the gameplay, obviously, you've got fewer kids out there.
There was actually an article that came up on my email, the association. I didn't get a chance to read it, I just got it yesterday. But it talked about is eight-man safer than eleven, so I don't, I'll have to look at all. But, I mean, you look at the basics of safety, and you're still, you're still tackling, you're still, you know, all that stuff is still there, there's still contact, but it's not...
It's the same game, is what you're telling us.
Yeah, absolutely.
So it shouldn't be any different.
Right, it's part of that aspect, you know. You have less body movement.
Less space, right.
Now, the one thing I would say, and this is just my opinion, that if you're talking about safety, you're taking two less linemen off the field. And you look at the, the, a lot of times, you talk about head injuries, that's, that's where you see, just because it's a constant, constant, but, so maybe that aspect of it, that I, that's just my opinion, that's not a, nothing scientific, right?
So the field narrows and it's shorter.
The field narrows.
Down to forty yards instead of fifty, right?
And it's a hun, it's eighty instead of a hundred. So the scoring, though, so we, this was something I'm bothering, because it makes no sense. That scoring should go up as much as it does. And if you go square footage of the field, eight-man is actually smaller per player. So there's less square footage per player, and eight-man is eleven-man, which, so we have to look, and it's the hashes is where you see the difference. So, eight-man runs the same percentage as college hashes. So you always have more room outside, is what it boils down to. So you're having high school kids play on a, on a college-type field, hence why the scoring increases. So, that's why I say it's not just a, not that you lose the game, it's just you're, you're putting athletes on...
Is your scholarship opportunities the same as eight-man, as eleven-man?
Absolutely. There's actually, I was reading something earlier that, you look at, of course, number of players, but those numerous kids have gone, Division One. There was a first round draft pick this year to draft a football guy, linebacker who played at college. So, our high school, sorry.
What would it do with our standing in Lewis and Clark? I believe it's four, it could be out.
Not necessarily. There, there's been conversations that there's a fear of, you know, we may not be the only school faced with that.
Yeah.
So we've had conversations about trying to figure out where the conference is going, and do we need to look at a conference that has both? Some schools that play eleven-man, some that play eight-man, and, you know, and maybe bring in a North Shelby, so now you have five and five, or, you know, if it ever gets to that point, I don't know what schools are getting close, but I know there's, there's a lot of schools in our conference that are going to be facing the same decisions we are. So, I would say we go with the assumption that we will not be in a conference if we do this, just because that's what the bylaws and the constitution dictate. And I wouldn't want to assume that, you know, hey, don't keep us in the conference, that's not fair to them, not fair to us to just assume that. So when we make this decision, we have to go into it thinking that we're going to be kicked out of the conference. But, like I said, we've had conversations as a conference, is that something we want to entertain moving forward? Because there's, there's a lot of schools in our conference that maybe it's not football, maybe it's softball, that they're having a hard time fielding a team, does that mean they're out of the conference? So, everybody's facing the same issues with enrollment and participation numbers. So, I think this is a good time for the conference to reevaluate that and talk about how do we keep the conference together, but know that different schools have different needs. So, so I didn't answer the question yes or no, but, I'm not saying it's definitely, yes, we're out of the conference, okay.
What about Skyler?
So, that's, that's kind of what spurred the conversation, is according to the constitution, Skyler would be out of the conference. We've decided to hold off until December or in the fall, and if Skyler decides of going back to eleven-man, to keep him in the conference, or vote at that time whether or not they stay in the conference. But in the meantime, between now and then, we're going to try and look at the bylaws and try and come up with, is there a better way to do this, to keep everybody involved? And that's kind of our goal. Don't know where that's going to go, but...
Any other questions?
Can you know what the participation has been for those eight-man teams? What I'm saying is, kids, are they just as enthusiastic in going out to football for eight-men as they were eleven?
As a whole, I can't answer that question. I, I can say, North Shelby, which I think they, that that's the one that's closest to us, I guess. Their, their numbers went up. Now, they had some bigger classes coming up as well, so that's, that's got to play a factor into it. But, just generally speaking, success, I mean, success brings numbers up.
Yeah.
You know, and I would say that more than anything, if you start having relative much success, that you're going to get more, more athletes out, so.
But they do go going into it, that they had three big classes coming up too.
Yeah, yeah, so they have...
Yeah, they do, yeah.
They're, they're bigger than what they, you know, what's part of the numbers. And it's not that they have forty kids up anyways, but there was a point they started seeing sixteen. And they're upper, mid, mid upper twenties now, last year, so.
I know Skyler last year, when they had thirteen, they went, they got last year out.
Thirteen?
Yeah, they were.
Wow.
Well, North, North Shelby really didn't have a choice, because Lewis and Clark did not take them in, or fear that they're eleven-man football, because North Shelby was still planning on playing eleven-man football. But when they didn't get accepted into the Lewis and Clark, they were kind of left out there, so that's when they pursued the eight-man.
Thanks.
Thank you.
This is a grant application for the electric bus.
Okay, so, I bring this up, just because it's time-sensitive, so. EPA has put out their grant application for monies to go towards bus replacement or anything that is improving diesel emissions. The application is due the twenty-sixth, and I've worked on it diligently over Christmas break, and then came across some sections, I was like, how am I going to get this, or how am I going to get that? So, this grant is operated by, there's eight different regions in the United States, and so there's a region for us, we're Region Seven. So, I called our director of Region Seven to tell him I've been working on this grant, and I've got several questions, had a list, was going to ask him the questions. So, he told me, well, he says, I got some options for you, but, he says, you're probably not going to like what I have to tell you. And so, he says, first off, if you're, if you're applying for this grant, your school district, he says, I'm going to tell you, have a ninety-nine percent chance of not getting it. So, that was deflating, because, anyway, so, I said, so what do you mean? And he says, well, actually, we're looking for bigger projects, not just buying one bus. We're, we're looking for big projects, and, he says, and a lot of the information that is in this grant that's asking you, you're going to have a hard time coming up with that information, which I was like, okay, that answers probably ten of my questions. So, he gave me some suggestions. He says, the EPA also puts a bus grant out there, and I told him that that bus grant will give you twenty thousand dollars, not, that's, you know, when you're, if you're buying an electric bus, twenty thousand dollars is not going to make it affordable. So, he says, wait a minute, you say you're buying an electric bu, you're looking at an electric bus? I said, yes. So, he, he made a recommendation that I pursue this grant, but with another organization that's already writing it for several different things. So one of the organizations that he directed me to is the American Lung Association. They're in the process of applying for this grant. And he informed me, he says, if you call them and tell them you're interested in an electric bus, he says, they would probably love to add you to their grant. So I called, didn't get an answer, left a voicemail, said what I was interested in, and pretty quick, I got a call back. And shortly after, I got an email saying, here's what we need from you to add you to the grant, but we'd love to add you to the grant. So, I, I bring this up because if we do that, if we wrote this grant ourselves and got the grant, then we can make a decision, do we actually want to pursue the grant or not? But if the American Lung Association puts us in the grant, we have to commit that if they get the grant, that we have to pay our fifty-five percent of the bus purchase. So it, it, it's a commitment. Once we do this and they get it, we're committed to buying the bus. So, that's why I made it an action item, because we need to make a decision as to whether or not we want to pursue that route. So I, a quote, on the bus, three hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty. If we got the grant, that would pay a hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars of it, leaving a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars. REC would still do their portion, and treating this as a pilot project, with putting in the charging station and also putting thirty thousand towards the bus, taking the bus cost down to a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirteen. A diesel bus is ranging right about with our specification, ninety thousand dollars. So that means there's a difference of sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars. The school districts that I've have contacted um that operate these buses say there's significant savings in both fuel versus electricity as well as maintenance on the bus. Everyone I've talked to is telling, giving me numbers between fifty-two hundred and sixty-two hundred and a year in savings on maintenance and fuel combined. The part I don't know about is V to G, so vehicle to grid. When R E C talked about putting our charging station, they're gonna, it's gonna be set up to where on days we don't have school, um instead of pulling electricity off the grid, we can pull it off the bus and save on our electric bill. Charging the bus at night is a lower rate, because the demand is, is lower. So um Virginia is, is purchasing um fifty buses on this concept that they're gonna get, they're gonna gain. They've done some studies, and they're gonna gain some money from plugging these buses in and generating. I don't know, and I don't have exact figures. So here's what I'm telling you. If the bus lasted ten years, and let's just say you save four thousand dollars on maintenance and fuel every year, um that'd be forty thousand, so now you're down to spending twenty-nine thousand dollars more on the bus. I do not know what the V to G would save us on our electric bill. But the gentleman that's in charge of the, the Virginia project um told me, he's anticipating about twenty-three dollars a day that the bus is not being used on a route. Amount to significant amount of money, if you think about the days we don't have school, summer school and whatnot. So the question is, I feel confident that over ten years, um and if the bus lasts fifteen years, then you're definitely saving money. Um I feel confident that over ten years, the bus will, the bus cost will be equivalent to a diesel bus. But I, I don't have that proof, and we wouldn't have that proof until we know on our electric bill what it's going for us um and what the savings would be for us. So um there's the information I have. The other thing I wanted to share with you is something else I'm working on. If you remember, I told you guys that D N R, the Missouri D N R, had told us that, you know, in the, in the spring, they would be offering sixty to ninety percent towards an electric bus um with the Dara Volkswagen money. So I get the report, uh this is a draft, um and um so this report on here has sixty, actually forty to eighty percent on a bus. But then they tie maximums to it. So like you could get up to forty percent on the bus, but not receive more than twen- or thirty-six thousand dollars. And if you do an electric bus, they'd throw in another twenty-five. So really, that would generate sixty-one thousand dollars, um which is not, again, the forty-five percent generates a hundred and eighty-nine thousand versus sixty-one thousand. Um I've tried to get some answers with D N R, R E C's trying to get some answers with D N R. Um talked to Credit Redman, who works for D N R, trying to set up a meeting with them, because they want comments and they want suggestions. This is a draft, so I'm hoping I can meet with them next week. I've shared with them this Volkswagen settlement state scorecard. Um this rates every state on how they spend the um Volkswagen money. So I'm just gonna kinda give you guys an idea of, so they, they rate every state with an A-plus, A, B, C, D, or F. So we talked about electric buses being the future, so I was interested to see if they had a focus in here on electric buses. So you get a point if, number one, um electric vehicles are prioritized in your funding. You get a point if electric vehicles are pri- prioritized in your state plan goals. You get a point if electric buses are prioritized. You get a point for having a program to remove diesels off the road. You get a point for um signifying that anything besides diesel is not fun, is not funded. Alternative fuel vehicles like compressed natural gas, propane eligible, you get points for those, considering those. You get a point if charging infrastructure's eligible in this funding, and you get a point if the state's using fifteen percent of its awards on charging infrastructure projects. So a lot of that speaks to pushing electric vehicles when you read through that. So that's eight different ways you can gain points. I forget, I think it was thirty-seven out of the states, thirty-seven of the states have made electric school buses a priority. Missouri ranks, is given a grade of D. And Missouri says that it's in their plan that they will put emphasis on um electric vehicles. So I'm not sure about the grade, but it's a good conversation piece that I hope to have with D N R to try and talk about. Um R E C is, is looking at trying to do a larger pilot project and talk to D N R about taking some of that Volkswagen money, setting it aside to purchase maybe twenty buses and put throughout the state, um something kind of of, of that magnitude, and putting the focus on. From what I'm understanding, the governor um at, at one point showed interest in electric buses, so we're hoping that somewhere or another, we can get some information. So we're still looking at that avenue, but I've not had very good reception on just even getting a meeting. Um I've submitted comments on what we felt that we would like to see with this um Volkswagen money, but I'm not sure where this is gonna go, so just wanted to update you guys on that. Questions?
I have a question, but it's staying. It seems like we both to go ahead with this tonight, that act of ask was on, it'd take years to break even, eleven, it's hard to say. If we both know on it, it's not like we've killed the project, we still, we've got a lot of information. I think it's too soon to commit, I just have to go by uh the amount of money that it is and, and, you know, no more savings than what we're gonna see, I think we'll put it off and, and till we know more about it and, and keep working on it. Governor said tonight on the news, he's gonna put ten million more in transportation, I seen. Hundred more, hundred million more in education, ten million more in transportation. So we'll see what else comes up, I think we need to pay whatever for tonight. I just don't feel confident committing to submitting unknowns.
I don't either, that's why it's, well, a- and you have to think, you know, the prices have dropped. Battery technology has improved year and year, so you have to think at some point that's going down. But I have to think, I have to be hopeful that we can do something more at the state level and put more emphasis in. If, if this was sixty percent, it'd be a no-brainer. We just talked about all the projects we need to focus on, um, you know. I will let um the American Lung Association know that we're, we're not gonna participate um in applying for this grant.
We still need the action.
You got it as much.
We still need to have an action.
No, we can, lack of a motion and kill the action, so.
Okay. Here, no motion. Brings these to adjournment.
I move that we adjourn the regular session to go into the closed session for the purpose of considering personnel under section six, ten, point oh-two-one, subsection three and thirteen.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. View?
Yes.
Mr. Cardwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Creading?
Yes.
Mr. Reel?
Yes.
Mr. Shankla?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven, zero.